I'd like to call the meeting to order. What's that? Oh, can we please do the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, there is no public comment for this session.
Thank you, Mr. Updrove. This takes us down to our discussion information for the committee meeting for Education and Student Services Committee. This evening, we're going to have a very large data presentation presented by our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Stephanie Petrie, and we apologize for being a little late. We know you have a lot to share, so please take your time, and if we go slightly over into the time, we can do that. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. David Heiser and board. I appreciate you giving me some time tonight to talk about our progress. And before I start, I do want to thank all of my colleagues who are here tonight because they really helped me put together all of this information. And my goal tonight is really to highlight how our data is reflecting our mission and vision and our work towards helping all of our students become that portrait of a graduate that we've outlined within our strategic plan. So as we walk through the data, I am going to take you through the different components and show you kind of what that looks like within the district. So if we start with real-world knowledge and thinking about how do we help our students build career awareness, strong academics, their digital literacy, and their financial literacy, I'm going to share with you some evidence that we are doing a good job with that. One of the things that came out in August, and I don't know if any of you did see this, but in August, around the 18th, there was a notice from the U.S. News and World Report that BASH was recognized as award-winning in the national rankings. One thing I do want to point out, that data is actually not recent data. It's from '22, '23. But a lot of the components within that recognition are things that we are still doing a really phenomenal job with, and I want to highlight that for you so you can see the progress that we're making across the district. So there are six areas that are fall within this ranking. This is what they use to kind of make a judgment. Because it's, when you think about state assessments, it's different from across every state. So these are the different categories that they use, and I'll kind of go through what this looks like for us now within the district. So college readiness and college curriculum breadth has to do with involvement in AP classes. Our state assessment proficiencies and state assessment performances are those standardized assessments that our students take. Looking at our underserved student performances, I'm looking at the demographics within the school district and how they perform on those assessments, and then also graduation rate. So we're going to walk through some of this data. I'm going to start with our AP exam participation and pass rates. So if you look at this data, you'll notice that the percent of students at BASH taking AP courses is steadily increasing if you look across the years. Another thing I'd like to highlight is that the percent of students that are passing AP exams with a three or four is consistently higher than the national average. So when we look at that across our country, our students are doing a great job with that. In addition, if you look at the far right column, you'll notice that we are consistently performing above the United States across the country with our students who are performing advanced or that three or four scoring across the country. So that's really a celebration. The other piece I want to highlight is the picture on the bottom is actually from this year's AP registration presentation that was held last week. And you can just see, I think all of you at some point have been in our BASH auditorium. You can see the number of students that are in the auditorium, and that is a reflection of our students' commitment to their academic excellence and taking those more challenging classes. So that really is a celebration for us. The next piece of data is taken from the PA Future Ready Index, and this is the breakdown of ethnic demographics. And if you'll notice, the most recent data that is in the Future Ready Index is from 2023, 2024. But if you look across the trends, you can see that our district is changing. Our demographics are changing, and we have a different population than we did in the past five years, and that continues to change. And as we think about meeting all the needs of our students, you know, we need to take all of those things into consideration. The PA Future Ready Index also gives us a picture of other demographics. So two things I want to point out on this slide is the change in our economically disadvantaged students, and I think that's an important piece for us to recognize. And as we think about the supports that we provide to our students, a lot of our students may have more needs just in that support range that maybe they hadn't before, or stressors that might be in their households. We want to make sure that we are providing all of those different types of supports for our students within our school setting. In addition, our English language learners have increased across the past five years. We are almost at 1% of English language learners. And thinking about helping those students become accustomed to the English language and be successful within their academic endeavors, definitely needs some more supports, and we'll make sure that we're considering that as we go through our plans and looking at how we support all of our students. And the last piece I just wanted to highlight on this piece of data is our increase in special education population. You'll notice that in that timeframe that's in the PA Future Ready Index, we have increased by 3%. So that does require some additional supports, and I want to thank you for your support in the increase in our specialized, our special education teachers this past year's budget, because that certainly is making a huge impact for our students. The next slide outlines our graduation rates. So the image on the far right again is from the PA Future Ready Index. That data is not the most current, but that is what's on that site right now. If you look at the other chart, that is our graduation rates that our school counseling department provided. And when you look at those percentages, you will notice a little bit of a difference as far as the percent of graduation rate. Those numbers on the left are our raw data numbers, so meaning that's counting every student that graduated. They might have been maybe in an alternate placement. They might be a student that qualifies for additional years of education because of some IEP goals. So that is showing those students that were counted as graduation from BASH during those years. But you'll notice our percentages are really high, and that is really an attest to all of the work within all of our school buildings. The other piece that I just want to highlight, and we're going to go in a little bit more depth as I talk about some of the other data, is our graduation pathways. So there are multiple pathways that students can take to graduate. So the highest pathway is the keystone exams, which is, we'll be looking at that data in a few minutes. But if a student is not successful within being proficient or advanced in that exam, there are other pathways to help them reach their goals of earning a high school diploma, and also some that are maybe more relevant to their educational endeavors. The first pathway is looking at our students who attend BCTC. So an option for a student is to also use their NOCTI exams, which is their career competency exams that they take at BCTC. And I just really want to look at this slide with some celebration. So if you look at the top portion and look at the NOCTI data, and that's at or above competency in their certified programs at BCTC, and the percentage of our students that are performing at that level is really high, you know, and I really think that is an amazing thing for our students. And the other thing, as a moment of pride for Boyer Town, is that we're averaging a higher amount than across the county. So I think that's a really wonderful thing that we can celebrate with our students that are attending the Career Center. And then also, if you look at the percentage of PA skill certificates that were awarded, you can see that there's a steady increase in our students from Boyer Town across the past three years of data that we have here. And again, in '23, '24, and '24, '25 are outperforming our students in across the county. This slide is just informational and something for us to consider. So if you're looking at our acceptance trends, you will notice a decrease in acceptance. And the reason that we are attributing to that really is not that our students aren't ready or prepared, but the competition to get into BCT is getting more and more stringent. There are more and more students that are applying to those programs, so it's really competitive. So it is really imperative that we take that into consideration, that we help prepare our students, no matter what pathway they want to take, that they are getting the skills, the knowledge, they understand the connections between behavior and how that potentially could impact some future aspirations that they may have. Our counseling office at the high school does a wonderful job of visiting both the middle schools and the elementary schools to outline those possibilities for students so they can set that dream, that idea. But the acceptance is really encompassing more than just filling out a paper and say, I'd like to go there. So they really are looking for that big picture of a student that will be able to contribute to those programs at BCTC. The next couple slides of data are information that our seniors have done self-reporting. And there's a couple interesting pieces just to consider as we look at post-secondary schooling and also post-secondary goals for our graduating seniors. You'll notice there is a trend of a decrease of students reporting that they're attending a post-secondary school. I mean, I think across the country, we see that trend decreasing, and there's a lot of factors for that: different interests, the costs involved with pursuing a post-secondary education. But we do have a significant number of students that are still pursuing that, that are graduating from BASH. This information is about what students reported as, what they are going to be doing if they are not going on to college. It outlines certain types of career options and also notes if they don't know or if they're unemployed. Part of our programming throughout all of the years of the student schooling, they are looking at career options and career expiration. And I think, you know, if you look at the numbers of unknown and unemployed over the past three years, those numbers have decreased. So I think that's a celebration in that, you know, our students are thinking about their future and making plans. Is that? Okay. I didn't think it was something I did. Just checking. Okay. And then this is just an outline of our students who plan to attend the military, and those numbers also have increased this last year. So now we're going to dive into some of the academic data. So I think when we think about data, we often think about test scores or various things. But I'm going to share with you a variety of data and kind of explain its purpose throughout the children's educational time at, within our school system. So something new this year that we're implementing is an academic screener at the elementary school level. And this is, particular assessment is for reading skills. So we're looking at what are our students' fundamental skills in reading. The purpose of this assessment is to really identify where there might be a significant or an area of need, and then we can use some of our diagnostic tools to figure out what are the specific needs to help support that all of our students in their reading development. The other pieces of data that I'm going to share with you tonight are formative data, and that's assessments that are ongoing and given throughout the year that the teachers can use to inform their instruction and make adjustments so that they can help support the student's growth. When you think about the state tests or a final exam or end-of-course assessment, which we refer to here in Boyer Town, those are our summative assessments, meaning it's the test at the end, the end of a grade, the end of a course, and looking at, did the students meet those expectations at the completion of those courses. So we're going to take a look at some of those results and have some conversations about that. The final piece of data is our post-secondary data, and that is looking at, you know, students' options. And there's a lot of career connections with all of those assessments, which we'll take a look at in just a few minutes. So the first screen I do want to show you is our dibbles kind of outline. So what this outlines is the specific reading skills that students are assessed during this screener. And an important piece, because you may hear this from some of the constituents as report cards come out, we are talking now about specific skills in reading, and there is developmentally steps that a child goes through to develop as a reader. Previously, you might have heard about levels, so they're reading at a certain level. Now we're really digging into what are the specific skills that that child is doing well in, what is maybe something that they're having a hard time with so that we can address those specific skills. So in that chart, you'll see on the far right is the grade where those skills are assessed. So you can see that progressively, at the beginning of kindergarten and first grade, we're looking at phonemic awareness and phonics. So can students identify letters? Do they know what those letters sound like? Do they know how to combine those letters and sounds together to put words together? When they develop that, it then leads to fluency, the ability to read thoroughly and clearly, and then also then will build their vocabulary and comprehension. So you'll notice those check marks increase as the students get older because those skills have developed and they've moved from learning how to read to now reading to learn. So that foundational skills are really important to develop so that we can have our students able to read and expand their educational opportunities. So now as we dive into formative and summative assessment results. So this is a sampling of PSSA results from our elementary-age students from grades three to eight on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side is our students in grades three to eight, an example of their diagnostic ELA results this school year in the fall. So on the right-hand side, you'll notice that from grades, and this is a combination of all elementary students, we had 51% students proficient or advanced in that summative assessment, that assessment at the end of the school year. The assessment on the left-hand side is our diagnostic assessment right now. So that's our formative assessment. It's telling us where students are currently and allows us to adjust our instruction throughout the year and make sure we're meeting their needs. And in a couple slides, you'll get to see an example of how that program allows teachers to do that in their instruction. So this slide looks very similar, and this is the math results from grades three to eight. And if you notice, which I find interesting, and something that we really want to think about and target, is that our proficiency rate on the PSSAs in math last year was 55%. Our students are starting the year with that proficiency level. So we definitely have work to do, and we want to make sure that we are addressing those specific needs with all of our students. In the middle school levels, again, on the right-hand side is our PSSA results, and this is for all grades in the middle school, six, seven, and eight. And on the left-hand side is their diagnostic data from the fall, showing you that they are around the same level of proficiency. And then their ELA results, again, looking very similar. But the important piece when we look at the formative assessments, this is an example from ELA. So if you look at the top image, that is the overview of all of the students. This is example, this is a sample from one class. So if you see all those little tick marks, those represent students. So a teacher can open up this program, it's called the iXL tool that we use, and they can see where their students fall in relation to their skills and the continuum. If they wanted to dig deeper into a specific skill, they can look at reading strategies, vocabulary writing strategies. And if you'll notice on the second image, there's group numbers below. So what that does for a teacher is to be able to group students with similar needs. So this example is looking at reading strategies. So that teacher can take that information from this diagnostic tool and dig deeper into what the specific needs are for those groups of students and deliver small group instruction based on those student needs. This is an assessment tool that we use pretty regularly in the elementary schools and middle schools, that they keep a constant finger on the pulse of where students are doing along the year with their skills, so they can see that growth. The levels kind of follow by the grade level, so the 300s are third grade. So at the beginning of a year, we would want to see our third graders, and the lower 300s, by the end of the year, we wouldn't see them approaching 400. So you can really see that progress across the span of a year. And this is just another example, same concept, but with math, that you can see that it breaks down the different skills and allows the teacher to group them based on their needs. At the high school level, our keystone exams are, as in a summative assessment, that they use in algebra, biology, and literature. So as I talked about earlier, this is one of our graduation pathways. So if a student is proficient or advanced on all three of those exams, they've completed that pathway. Excuse me. There's also a composite score that could be an option for students. So out of two of the exams, if they reach a certain composite score, they could use that as a pathway with the caveat that they do not score below basic on any of those assessments. So the interesting thing about the keystones is that it's a course-specific assessment. So Algebra I is given typically in grade seven, eight, or nine. Biology is typically given in ninth grade, and literature is typically given in 10th grade. So as we look at this data, you'll notice that it has a span of grade levels, and we'll talk about why that looks that way. So if we start with the algebra keystone, you'll notice there is, 100% of sixth graders were advanced on the exam. That is a celebration, right? That's awesome. And we're very proud of this one sixth grader that took that exam. So this is a student that, because of their academic needs, were accelerated and took that Algebra I class in sixth grade and did very well on the exam. If you look at the seventh-grade band, this is the first year that our students are taking different levels of math. So these are our students who are more prone to being, doing well in math. So they're the higher, the higher math class that is accelerating, and you'll see that typically they perform pretty well on the keystone exam. As you look through the progression, you'll notice that in the 12th-grade year, for example, there was three students that were below basic and one that was basic. Those are students that, could be a lot of factors. They may have moved into the district and never took the Algebra I exam. They could have been a student that might have struggled in math classes. But those students would then be eligible for a different pathway, like we talked about earlier. So depending on what their goals are, they might be pursuing a different pathway if algebra wasn't their strong point. And looking at the literature keystone, so this is our 10th-grade year, so we have that, those spans of grades where students may have taken a keystone, and there's various factors for why a student wouldn't be taking it during that typical 10th-grade year. But ultimately, we want to make sure every student is having that opportunity to take that literature course and then that keystone exam at the completion. And biology is a course that's given in ninth grade, and we do have some students that do take it in older grades as well. So this example is a formative assessment for our keystone exams. This is called the CDT, which is a classroom diagnostic tool. And if you look at this image, the green bar is the grade level expectation. This is a sampling from a one class, and if you notice all the little dots, that represents a student in that class. So that tells the teacher where their students fall based on their performance on the diagnostic test. And the way that this test works is if I get a question correct, it gives me a more challenging question. If I don't get the question correct, it'll give me a question that might be a little bit lower so that I can, it can pinpoint where my level is. So if you look at the dots, the students who are closer to the green line are just about where they should be for the beginning of that course. The students that are above the green line are a little above where maybe they would be at the beginning of the year. The students below are ones that we're going to want to target some support for to help them be successful within this class. The other part of the CDT is on the right-hand side, you'll see that it offers eligible content and scoring examples for teachers, so they can dive into the specific skills and needs of students and help tailor their remediation or extra tutoring or extra support to help students make that progress across the year. So this is a test that is given multiple times throughout the year to see and track that progress. The final academic slide related to our state assessments is our PVAAS, and this is just hot off the press. This was released last week to us. This is the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. So what that means is it is measuring growth. So it's looking at all of the academic data from across the state, and it formulates a predictor for if a student scored in a certain trend, what their likelihood is to experience that growth over the next assessment. So if you notice, there are a lot of dots on the far-right blue side, and that is where we are exceeding the expectation of growth. So even though our scores might not have been maybe where we expect them to be, I think it is a celebration that our students are growing. So we are, where are we, we are starting, they are growing and progressing, and this is data from across the district. So the trends across the districts are showing that we are very consistently, you know, going beyond that growth expectation outlined by this, the PVAAS system. So as we look at some more post-secondary data, so that was all data that is relevant to our instruction, our curriculum, and our state standards. So our students also do participate in other assessments based on their secondary goals. So the SATs are an exam that a lot of students take in preparation for college. So in our 2025 grads, we had 213 students take the SATs. So you can see the top row is the trends of where our students scored, and you will notice that they do trend higher than national and Pennsylvania ratings. So our students are really doing a nice job as far as their performance on the SATs. And this is just a sampling of last year's assessments, the students that took the exams and where they fell in the averages of the assessment for the total score, the English reading and writing, and the math scores. The PSAT is something that we offer to all 11th-grade students. So every 11th grader actually tomorrow morning will be taking the PSAT. That's in school tomorrow. But this is a great opportunity to expose students to the PSAT if they are going to consider taking the SAT. And, you know, again, I think when we look at the trends across BASH and across the state and the U.S., we really are trending above the average, and that's really a celebration that I think we need to highlight. And this is just breaking it down into the English reading and writing. Again, we're right around that state average and a little bit above the U.S. and global testers. And in math, we are trending again above those other areas. The PACT is another assessment that is given to all 10th graders. So tomorrow morning, our 10th graders will be taking the PACT. And this test, in the past, we have given a paper pencil exam. This year is the first year that it will be given digitally. So we do not get reports from the PACT as we do like the PSAT. I don't know why, but we don't get those reports. But the one thing I really want to highlight with this report is that students get this back. This is a sample of what a student would get back. It outlines their scores, and it really can be used for future planning. So the second page of this report, and I circled the little diagram on the left, because based on the students' responses and their academic aptitude, it gives recommendations for potential careers. Doesn't mean that that's what the student has to do, but it gives them guidelines. So for a student that's not sure what their next steps may be, this is a great tool to have those conversations about, you scored well in this area. The recommendation, you seem to have an aptitude for doing this. Let's take a look at what some careers might be in this area. So it's a really wonderful tool to start those conversations with students. And just, I do want to note that both of those exams also are things that can be used as a graduation pathway evidence. So those are assessments that can also be used for our graduation pathways. We also have a lot of students that are attending our Montgomery County Community College dual enrollment classes. So currently, we have 598 students that were enrolled in this program from, through last, this past summer and last year. So it really, you know, I think having students wanting to attend in the summer and continue that opportunity is a great, a great thing that we see our students are striving to do and go above and beyond within their academic endeavors. The ASVAB is an assessment that is mostly based towards a student that's interested in the military. It is a military enlistment test. This is another example of data that could be used for a pathway. The other great component for this assessment is there's a big career exploration. a big career exploration component. So I know, board members, you were given, sent out this PowerPoint. If you click on that blue highlighted, underlined item, it'll take you to the website, and you can see what some of those career exploration opportunities are as students get those results. So it helps guide them again in making some decisions about what their future may hold. So the next section of data that we're going to look at falls under our category of social emotional wellness. And these are some things that sometimes are harder to measure, but we do have some data that I think, you know, helps us understand, you know, the, the things that potentially impact students beyond the school day. So we know not every student might be coming to school with the same circumstances. And I want to share with you some data on how we do support students and information that we have to kind of help make decisions on what our students need. So this screen shows you our threat assessments and safe-to-say reports. So the threat assessments is something that we started in 21, 22, and you'll notice that the numbers have increased, and there's a lot of factors to that. A lot of it is the staff that are trained in taking, conducting a threat assessment have become better at, of conducting those assessments. And also, it has raised our awareness of when we should be asking some questions. We're not just assuming everything is okay. If something is said where a child might make a comment that they want to hurt themselves or hurt someone else, we want to make sure we take that seriously and go through that process. We are actually using a new tool from the Pennsylvania Commission of Crime and Delinquency that is really much more thorough, and we have started a new team that meets monthly to review our threat assessments and provide the building or the parents' recommendations for further support, potentially for a child if they have, if they need that based on the, the threat assessment. So it really has been a great tool and really, hopefully, you know, our goal is to help make sure our schools are safe, and that's a really important piece of our work. The safe-to-say reports are an anonymous report that can be made 24/7. So I do need to give, you know, a shout out to our team that's on our safe-to-say report team. They get calls in the middle of the night, and they are responding to incidences where at times, a student is not in a safe situation, and they're making sure that they're getting connected with the appropriate resources. So, you know, it's, it's not an easy job. You know, you're, you're getting those calls and you're, you know, in the middle of the night waking up and making sure you're getting that, you know, whether it's the family contacted, whether it's police contacted. But those reports have, have increased over the past years as well, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that it's anonymous. So we, we're not reporting who's making that call. But I also think that students have seen, that friends have been helped by making that call and gotten the support that they need to, you know, to avoid something that we wouldn't want to have happen. Our SAP data, so our SAP program is our Student Assistance Program, and this identifies issues for students in a very, a variety of ways, but really, it's, it's issues that are, that could potentially get in the way of a child's ability to focus and be successful within the school setting. So if you look at the trends from 2023 to 2024, you will notice a pretty significant increase. And the reason that we attribute to that is that we've been able to offer more groups within our school settings. So that allows us to meet the needs of more students. So I would not think that the increase is a negative thing. It actually means that we're getting more students, more support based on the needs that are coming in from certain reports. And this is just some examples of the types of referrals. So you'll notice that internalizing, externalizing behaviors are, are the biggest areas of report. So internalizing behaviors really falls in a student that might be demonstrating anxiety or depression. Externalizing behaviors are more explosive behaviors. That's where the majority of our reports have come from in the past two years, as well as social concerns. So that's another area where we see some more referrals coming across for our student assistant teams. And if you look at the types of recommended, recommended services by the team, so the team meets, discusses, connects the, the student and their family with appropriate resources, but you'll notice that group intervention number is our largest number as far as the types of recommendations, and that's something that we can offer within the school setting. So the last piece of our Portrait of a Graduate is Composition of Character. And it's really hard to measure composition of character, but I wanted to highlight for you some things that are happening, and this is definitely not an extensive list. There are a lot of amazing things happening in all of our buildings that help build integrity, encourage lifelong learning, demonstrate kindness, and build resilience in our students. But just to highlight a few, I want to share our BASH internships. So if you'll notice, there's a lot of opportunities outside of the school setting and inside the school setting for students to participate in an internship. They can get high school credit for that, and they, and in those, the instances where they're working outside, some of them are actually employed in that environment also, and can also get, you know, be, be making a, you know, an hourly wage, and also building a capacity for future employment. So I do want to just thank those outside organizations for taking our students as interns because it really is a wonderful opportunity for them. Within the school setting, you'll notice a lot under the education and training, we have quite a few students who will do internships with former teachers and spend that time because it's education is a career that they want to pursue. Our auto-visual, auto-visual aid students are obviously a wonderful support for us in all of the publicity that they do for us as far as creating videos, filming board meetings, but they're an active members in, within our community. I wanted to highlight our National Honor Society students. They provide tutoring to their peers during the homeroom advisory period in the library. So you can see the signs displayed there are the different subjects. Students can come in and get support from the National Honor Society students. I also want to highlight our involvement in PIAA sports and music opportunities. And if you look at those numbers, this really provides an awesome opportunity for students not only to be involved in something, but to represent our school district. So going out and showing that good sportsmanship, the arts and music groups performing and representing our district and really bringing that pride to our school. At the high school this year, we are offering an executive functioning class for students who have an IP or a 504 plan. This is a class that runs quarterly, and it focuses on strategies that include time management, organization, and planning, study skills, and test-taking skills, task initiation, and sustained attention, self-control, working memory, and perseverance, and really giving students those opportunities to develop those skills for independence and being able to do those things on their own as they look to graduate from BASH. Our elementary school counselors also offer lessons that are also designed for developing self-awareness, learning self-regulations, developing common language for expressing feelings, and supporting positive behavior within the elementary school setting so that all of the students get a consistent message. They also start to introduce career exploration at that primary and intermediate levels, so students can start thinking about what, things that they might want to do when they grow up. And then that builds in our middle school levels where our counselors and classroom teachers were collaboratively, collaboratively in our REACH program, which is a course that students take with, again, high emphasis on personal, social, and academic growth. They're doing interactive lessons. They're learning to navigate social situations in those middle school years, developing positive relationships, their self-awareness, but then also spending some significant time looking at their futures, their strengths, their needs, and also looking at what might be career opportunities for them. So that data presentation was really multiple forms of data, not just the academic pieces. But I think it's important for us to keep in mind that all of those factors come into play as we look at supporting our students to become a portrait of our graduate that we've outlined based in our strategic plan and aligning to our vision and mission. Are there any questions? I did move kind of fast because I know we're on a little bit of a, a little less time crunch, but any questions related to the presentation? Yeah?
I'm looking for the graph that you, that we get typically on the Future Ready site that will show 21, 22, 23, 24. It makes it so much easier when you can see that for the PSSA tests. Is that something that you could send?
Yes, the PA Ready Index is not released yet, so we just got that PVS data. So that tells me it's, we're getting close. But I certainly can share that when we have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I think a couple key components to this, and we, I think this presentation has been done, this is probably the earliest in the school year that this presentation has been done, the board, and there's a reason for that. You know, by the time we hit January, which has been a more relevant, or not relevant, but more past experience, you know, we're already halfway into the school year. And to share that data with you, with our community, with our families, with our teachers, with everyone, I think is, is a bit unfair. You know, we have an obligation to share the data that resulted from a lot of different experiences throughout the prior year, and then act on that and figure out a plan. You're going to hear in probably the next hour at our next meeting, how this data is being utilized in some of the plans that we have and we've incorporated so far at the start of this school year as it relates to strategic plan, our MTSS framework, that, that area that, which you've heard a lot about, and how we are utilizing some of those components to make continuous improvement, right? The idea here is that. One of the po, real positives that we learned about just last week was that PVS data, which is telling us that projections for our students is very, very high. While some of them may be trending lower than other school districts on average, but we're exceeding on the growth end of things. And our attention to detail when it comes to some of the things that Mrs. Petrie and her team and all the administrative staff you see sitting here tonight is, is driving that and continue to drive that focus so that we can see continued increase improvement in our scores, highest value achievement scores and growth scores that we can assume to. That certainly doesn't take away from all the other data. The other data, when we look at a child, is, it's holistic data. And this idea of a portrait of a graduate, what type of portrait do we want of that student that walks across that graduation stage? And we, have we put them in a position to be successful and to take the next step of their lives and do it very successfully? That comes not just in one form of data, that comes in a holistic form of a lot of different factors and a lot of different data that you heard about tonight that contribute to that and the, and the success behind that. So I want to thank Mrs. Petrie for taking the time and her, her team of administrators who really worked through the data in being able to present this to you and present this to you so soon. We will continue to present some of the other data pieces as they get released, so that the board is aware of those types of things. And you'll be hearing through many committee meetings throughout this year about what it is we're doing. So the data is one thing. Now what are you going to do with that data and how do you act on that data? And our plans centering on that have already begun, and our staff has been really working hard. We had a large professional development day. It's a lot to take in. It's a lot different and some change mechanisms to that and when it comes to the expectations of that. So that's important for our staff, and they've really done a very good job in doing that. So we're, we're expecting some great things throughout the, the course of this year, and we're really excited about, I'm already excited about what next year we're able to present to you in terms of forms of data and to be able to see the types of continued growth that we, we hope to experience when it comes to that. So, any other questions for Mrs. Petrie?
No, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Shall we take five minutes? Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.